It's your show.
It's always great to go last before lunch.
You have 45 minutes.
Yep, that's right.
That's not a problem. I put an impact statement in here and I kind of want to preface it with this. You know, the four departments that I have, we'll talk about customer service when we talk about the electric utility, but you know, administration, information technology, purchasing in the warehouse were four of the primary departments where we had already proposed that there would be natural cuts that occurred as a result of the sale of the electric utility because we would have fewer accounts payable, less payroll, fewer utility bills. And so, there were already fairly substantial staff reductions predicated on the sale of the electric utility. So, when it came time to add on top of that, the additional increases that were needed to meet the budget goal, it became pretty difficult. You know, for my departments, with one exception, and we'll talk about it, our customers are the other city departments. And so, cuts in our staffing impact other city departments in a way that makes it doubly tough on them when they're already making cuts themselves. And our primary mission is to make sure that we safeguard and properly account for the city's resources in many areas, whether it be funds, computers, inventory, and that sort of thing. And I've had in many circumstances, small finance departments, the real challenge becomes internal controls. You know, it's very, very important within a finance department that you structure duties, no matter how cross-trained you are, so that there are certain things that nobody does all of. You don't have someone take a utility payment who also has the ability to go into the billing system and modify a customer's bill. You can't have someone who pays the accounts payable who also is the person that reconciles the bank accounts because those checks and balances are what help to make your city controls in place to safeguard your assets and to make it more auditable. And so, that's really the situation that we were stuck with when we started making these cuts. In the finance and administration department, you know, the one place where we do have customer interface is at the cashier window. And so, in, given the fact that I have a very, very small organization to start with, the one place I could go that was sort of a customer amenity value added and not a hard and fast requirement of federal and state law or accounting or any of the rest of it, was to propose the cuts that would allow us to actually close, not just the drive-through, I want to be clear, the cashier window in its entirety. There are still a variety of ways that people have to pay their bill, including they can still drive through that window and put it in the Dropbox and there will be timeframes in which, you know, if you put it in here before a certain time, it'll be posted to your account by X. But they won't actually have that personal interface and be able to walk up and hand it to someone and get it stamped and unfortunately won't be able to run at 10 minutes of five and pay their bill to keep from getting shut off. So, it'll put some of that back onto the customer in terms of making sure they manage their accounts properly. I never like to present a problem without at least some solutions and you know, certainly one of the things we're planning to do is the bank has offered us a process review of our cashiering function to try to help us make it as efficient as possible as well as provide some other payment options for people. The most notable being when people do bill pay through their banks right now, it creates a paper check. It's not a true bank-to-bank transaction and so those paper checks, giant stacks of them, still have to be processed by the cashiers. If we can get past that one, that will enable it for, basically we'll have two cashiers left who, without interacting with the public, will even before the sale of the electric utility, we believe still have the ability to process, you know, 33,000 customer payments a month, I mean that's what it comes down to, combined with some cross-training. The only other place that affects customers is we aren't going to be able to take cash anymore for turn-ons and things like that through the customer service window. It'll have to be a check or money order. And obviously, we'll have an issue if one person's on vacation and the other person becomes sick and this is where, within the confines of good internal controls and also, you know, whatever rules there might be with the Teamster contract, we'll do as much cross-training and coverage as possible. I've been blessed and cursed by the fact that within my four departments, particularly the customer service, the cashiering, and the finance, there's been a lot of movement as jobs come open. So, you know, right now I do have some people that, for instance, work in finance that used to be cashiers, some people in customer service that used to work in finance, you know, I've got a lot of that and so hopefully that cross-training will help as well. And then, at the time of the electric utility sale, we would decrease that function by one additional person and essentially have four functional areas in finance: payables, receivables, payroll and benefits, and accounts management, but enough cross-training between those that we think we can handle the functions that are remaining to us. Again, with a lot of attention to internal controls, process improvements, you know, things like that. I mean, that's really what we're going to have to do. I would say that, you know, over the course of the last couple of years, I think this finance department has done a really good job of expanding our communication with the public, working well with the Finance Commission, putting budgetary controls in place, and communicating better the city's finances and financial position. That happens, you know, basically that takes time, a lot of time. And so certainly, we want to strive to continue that, I think it's been very useful. But if myself and my Assistant Finance Director have to be more involved in the day-to-day operations, month-end closes and journal entries and things like that, we may come to the Finance Commission first and ask for some reduction in maybe the frequency of the external reporting and things like that. But we're going to try to do the best that we can do to keep all those things in place. In IT, we would be eliminating at 1 October, one network support tech, and then again, at the sale of the electric utility, propose to eliminate two more of the people that are back of the house.
Cindy, excuse me, could you work from this chart, please?
Sure.
And then, I'd like to go through every page, starting with page 24.
Absolutely. When we get to the individual sections, I'll have my department heads come up because they can answer specific questions. If you look at my org chart, since I was one of the ones that was the most, kind of the most bifurcated departments, I kind of color-coded it so you can see what it would look like at 1 October and then what it would look like again at the sale of the electric utility. So, in finance administration there, what we're showing is the elimination of one cashier, all the permanent part-time cashiers, and one cashier at October the 1st, and that would leave the two cashiers to handle everything without the window being open.
And the window would be closed, is that correct?
The window would be closed.
Do I understand that?
Drive-through.
And lobby.
It's a big impact. I will tell you this, it's my understanding that we, our customers were, at least our electric utility customers, were going to need to make that transition anyway.
Can you make it clear that we're talking about the drive-through window?
No, the inside window as well.
Inside window also.
Not customer service.
That's where I'm going.
I mean, obviously, people can still come to customer service and start new service and turn service off, but they cannot pay their bill at customer service. The bill paying will be Dropbox, EFT, credit card, mail-in, I mean, there's a variety of ways to pay your bill besides actually physically walking up to the window and talking to someone about it. That's the part.
There will be a box in the office, they can walk in, they can drop it in if they want and go on.
Absolutely. And if they drop it, it'll be clearly labeled, just like it is at the drive-through window now. If you drop it in before a certain time, it'll be posted to your account before the next business day or whatever that timeframe is.
How much does it save for getting the electric?
You know, it's one of those things that because it is connected to the electric and the water sewer utility, it does actually go back out again to some degree in the admin costs. So, you know, I don't have a number off the top, I can dig through here if you want, but it certainly comports with the direction I was given to eliminate positions and achieve an overall reduction in my staffing and drive toward efficiencies where people are more cross-trained and where the people I have left are focused on the things that we have to do by federal and state law and IRS regulations and Florida statutes and not what is essentially an amenity, albeit one that's taken advantage of by lots of people.
And that was my next question. Did you produce any type of numbers in terms of the number of customers who walk in on a daily or a weekly basis to simply just pay? I'm not talking about the contractors who are trying to get Temp-Electric and permits and all these other things, but just people that are walking in the door. And if the survey ever asks the question, "Why is it more convenient for you to drive all the way over here instead of just dropping the check in the mail?"
I do have those numbers and I'm hoping I can find them extremely quickly. If not, I'll dig through here and come back to them. And they were actually based not on talking to people, but just actual counts that my cashiers keep of the different ways they take bills in. You know, as to why, I could certainly talk with my cashiers. You know, there's a number of people that just, they like to pay cash and they feel comfortable handing their money across to someone and getting a stamp. There's certainly a number of people that, you know, juggling their expenses, they want to get in there and pay their electric utility bill right when they have to, to make sure that they don't get cut off. So, it's probably a combination of the two.
There are still people that don't have a checking account.
Exactly. And this would force those people to get a money order, which, you know, certainly is available in a number of places around town, but some people like to pay cash.
And Wayne, there's no legal requirement that a municipality accept cash for utilities, is there?
We'll find out.
Thank you.
No, there's.
I don't think there is, but I just want to make sure.
I mean, certainly, you know, it may encourage people in the direction.
It is legal tender.
It is.
So, we may have to, is what you're saying?
I don't believe there's any requirement that we have to accept cash.
We'll check and see.
I'm not aware of one, and I've been other places where, you know, there was restrictions on payments. But we'll look into that. I can find those numbers, probably, just give me a couple of minutes on that. It was a pretty, it was a larger number of people than I expected, but I don't want to pull the number off.
However, if a contractor comes in and wants Temp-Electric hooked up to a building site or wants to pay that final bill so he can get his final CO, that still will be the capability to do so, is that correct?
Not the payment of bills, but certainly the turn-on of new service and the disconnection of old service. We'll arrange something so that obviously when someone comes in and wants to turn on new service, they would give a check to the customer service people and then obviously if that check were to bounce the next day, that new service would be taken away again. But not just, "Hey, I want to pay my bill."
Okay.
That's not going to be an option.
Would the capability of paying for Temp-Electric from contractors perhaps take place at the Planning Department instead of having to make two visits to these different departments in the city because I've heard that concern?
Again, the goal here is not to do away with the cashier window and increase the number of places around the city where we take money from people because that, you know, from an internal control standpoint, would be a bad move. But some of the details like that, we haven't worked through yet. When we go through this process review with the bank.
Well, planning and zoning is taking.
Right.
Anyway, but in the past, I've heard from contractors that it was a concern that they had to make many stops instead of a one-stop shop like many municipalities have went to.
And we can certainly keep that one in mind and talk to planning and zoning about it. It's just, you know, there's obviously some details to this that we haven't worked through yet that we will between now and the 1st of October and we'll keep that one in mind.
I would like to revisit that from an economic development standpoint of making it easier for businesses to start businesses in the city than making it more difficult, especially now that they would have to mail checks in rather than being able to take care of everything in one stop.
And certainly, there's already, to some degree, a cashiering function within planning and zoning anyway, sort of. I mean, the money eventually makes it way down, it's way down to the cashier.
Down the stairs.
It all ends up down there. So, but yeah, we'll work through some of those specifics. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to find a way to take in revenues in the most efficient way possible, again, with internal controls in mind because I can't, you know, I can't have just cash coming in everywhere.
Well, let's get talking about other places in the city that collect money. I mean, our city clerk's office collects parking fees, they collect cemetery costs.
Recreation.
It seems like, yeah, we get, you know, we do have an awful lot of places within the, within the city that are collecting funds that don't need to be.
And they all flow, and this is what I want people to realize, they may take that, but they don't put it in the bank. All that money comes in through the cashier. So, I know everyone thinks that the cashiering function is about the utilities, it's not. All the revenues that the city takes in that are not via credit card come through those cashiers in that cage. Now, they do the, you know, the interaction with utility bills as well, but it all gets processed through there. That is the entire city's receivable function. So, when the clerk gets money in, they take it to the cashier.
We need to probably consolidate all these payment places, you know, and try as much as possible and to have it into one, you know, other it's.
At the risk of, you know, again, your concern, which is sending people to places, they come, they, you know, get a cemetery lot and then we say, "Okay, that's great, but now you've got to take your paperwork and your money over somewhere else." So, yeah, it's a tough one. I mean, I'm a big fan of fewer places and I always have been, but for the convenience of customers.
And control.
Well, let's build on what Mrs. Turner said because it is interesting. I think it would be good, at some point Cindy, if you were to come back with all the places people can pay for whatever they pay for, whether it's the marina, cemetery lots, recreation, I don't care. And let's take a look at that and see if what we're doing meets what you're talking about.
And if we could combine everything to a one-stop paying for all of the different things.
Or fewer stops, anyway.
Then perhaps having the cashier's window would be profitable if the marina wasn't accepting money and if we didn't have all these stuffs and everything was either mailed into one location or one-stop shop. It's just an idea.
It is. And again, and we'll look at it, you know, again, it comes back to.
They have to pay for your gas. They pay for gas.
They pay for gas.
Yeah, you're right.
We actually do the marina billing for the, not the transients and the rest of it, actually through the finance department and then those people do pay through check that weaves its way down. You know, you've just got that classic trade-off between you're going to make people at the marina come all the way to City Hall.
No, no, I was being facetious. We were just joking.
Would you, as we sit here, come back and tell us all the places money comes in and how it flows, so we know?
Not a problem.
That's all.
In the meantime, though, hopefully we can get some kind of consensus that if, if we're planning to take in all of the city revenues, including 33,000 utility bills with just two people, those two people cannot do that and continue to run the drive-through window and the face-to-face interaction. That's the only way that can happen. I will bring you a number for what it would take to put it back, so.
No, we're, I think we're all convinced.
To take it out, that's fine.
Fine.
The drive-through windows.
Yeah, the drive-through window.
Both windows, not inside as well. And again, that's a transition people we're going to have coming a few years down the road anyway, so. On the administration side, you know, essentially, I've got four people right now. One was already proposed to be eliminated at the sale of the electric utility and the way that this organization would look after that is just four functional areas: accounts management, accounts payable, payroll, and accounts receivable, with lots of interaction and cross-training between them and potentially some among departments. In information technology, the cut at October the 1st would be the elimination of a network support tech. And if we could look at this org chart in IT, you know, a few years ago, the department head position was eliminated, but there's still essentially two functional areas and one has to do with the management of all the city's computers and phones in all the locations where city employees use those things. And the other side, the system operations, has to do with the computer systems we have in the back of the house, if you will, that manage not only utility billing, but our entire general ledger, print checks, et cetera. And so, on the network and telecommunications side, we're proposing the elimination of one position in October the 1st. And, you know, that's a huge impact. That leaves you with essentially two people that are responsible for all the city phones and computers. What that means is that their focus has to be the functionality and security of the citywide systems, of the servers and that sort of thing, not the individual desktops that people have. So, you know, right now, they're very responsive in terms of, "Wow, it's not working," et cetera, but that's going to slow down and or be eliminated in terms of that end-user support that's provided for learning new software, loading new software, "Hey, my computer's down." Again, our customers being the other city departments, that can have an impact on productivity when your computer stops working and there isn't someone to come and help fix it today. And they do provide a lot of support to planning for replacement and rollout and choosing replacements and proper software and that sort of thing. Again, as much as they can, they'll continue to do that, but their primary focus will be make sure that the most bang for the buck, that the citywide systems work so all the people who are logged on whose computers do work can continue to work.
When you state that they are providing training for computer programs, is that not a capability of a module, a self-training program, that somebody could sit in front of their computer and figure out how to do it themselves?
They don't provide.
That's the way I do it.
They don't provide training, but they coordinate it and, you know, certainly if someone has a question about how something works, they don't go hold training classes for people and I'll let them get into it. But it's just, I guess, they're sort of our generic computer nerds. You know, you get something and you load it on and it's not working right or you don't understand how it works, that kind of thing. They're more responsive now than they will be able to be in the future to your individual computer problems.
Squad from Best Buy.
Squad from Pearl Beach, exactly.
I'm just saying, the reason I was going on this train of thought was that perhaps a training class of support staff throughout the corp, throughout the city from different departments could be pulled together. These are the most common problems we've seen and this is how you can help your own department.
We have some of that to some degree already, for instance, and again, I'll let them come up and talk to specifics, but the police department, you know, because of the difference in some of their requirements in security and safety in their systems, they have someone over there who doesn't require much, if any, help from the IT department that handles the rest of the city. Certainly, within every individual organization, there's people that have expertise in the software that that organization uses. And so, you know, again, it's one of those things, it's hard to put a finger on until it happens, but they're just not going to be as on-call as they are right now and they'll do the best that they can, but they're going to make sure that our servers still work. You know, they support the city clerk in records retention and those sorts of things. I mean, there's a lot of what they do that the citywide focus is really going to remain more their focus.
My next question is actually for Tammy, if you don't mind. And this is, I know we have a part-time employee that works with some technology with our taping of the city council meetings, and I wonder whether that part-timer could be utilized with the information technology department or if their functions are just totally separate?
He could if he was a full-time employee. Right now, Holt is working 30 hours a week and he has so much work that he can barely get done with that.
And he is with our city clerks, under the city clerks department. If you can just tell us a little bit about what his responsibilities are and how you are utilizing him.
Well, also, why he isn't under.
They're going with this, exactly.
I know where you're going.
You read my mind. It's really scary.
Well, he televises all the city council meetings as well as the different commission and boards. He does the website, does all our, anything that needs to be changed on our website, you know, keeps that updated. And I know that we had discussed maybe putting him under information systems and the reason that we didn't was because of the scheduling of the different commission and board meetings and the city council meetings that he televises.
It's really, he supports essentially the public information, public, you know, broadcasting function and the website function, not support any individual computers. I think it's really a time function. I know Tammy and I have talked about this, yeah, at this point with the number of meetings and also the substantial increase in the amount of information that's available on the city's website. I think over the last few years, more and more things, you know, whether it be broadcasts or backup packages, et cetera, he has to post all that stuff. So, within a 30-hour week, that's.
Yeah, and he does all the iPads too, puts all our information on the iPads for their city council meetings.
It's similar to the police department technology person that is assigned over there specializes, and in this particular case, he specialized to what the city clerk, she sort of manages the website, the information that's released and the public documents, and managing of the meetings that goes on because she has to be the liaison and have someone there. So, it's sort of a specialized individual.
I just wondered if other municipalities would tie these individuals, the police person, him, all under the information technology department in order to cross-train, to have people that are capable of taking over for them when they're out?
We've looked at it, you know, in the case of the police department, and again, if we want to get into the details, I'll get Paul to talk to it some. They have security issues that have sort of made it so that we're fine with that separation. They're pretty self-sufficient and I believe there is some, you know, there's some exchange of help and cross-training, but we don't necessarily want to go over and be a part of that system for that reason. Certainly, if Holt was under information technology, he's got computer skills, but to work in one department and be 99.9% of the time beholden to another department head and have that person really be the driver for his schedule and his activities on a day-to-day basis. If he had time left over, I'm sure he would help if he was asked, but I just don't know that he does at this point on a 30-hour week basis, not from what I've seen.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions, Stu?
I have another question about the organization chart, Cindy, if you're ready.
Certainly. Want to talk about purchasing and the warehouse, or?
Well, it's, yeah, it's a question about purchasing warehouse. Presumably, are all of these people going to move into this building? Part of them going to move into this building at the sale of electric or what is, what's the plan? That's what I wanted to know.
This is another one where it changes significantly between October 1 and the sale of the electric utility, but yes, the eventual goal, and we've actually reorganized our offices, physically reorganized them upstairs, is that what remains of the purchasing department will move here into City Hall, be co-located with the finance department for a couple of reasons. You know, one, we've been trying to, over the last year or so, and we're going to hopefully have it in place soon, to sort of streamline and cross-train the purchasing process, particularly with requisitions and purchase orders, to eliminate some paperwork that doesn't add any value to the process and kind of streamline that and it's easier if we're co-located. The other thing that's been a big focus since I got here is, you know, the asset management part. We talked some after the CAFR about inventory, physical assets, et cetera. As we purchased those, there used to be a person within the finance department a few years back who did mostly that, who accounted for fixed assets as we went through the year and that function doesn't exist and hasn't for a long time just because of staffing cuts. And so, my idea would be, the purchasing function would also be cross-trained to assist accounts payable to taking asset purchases, sort of cradle to grave, if you will, and make sure that as the year goes by, they get reflected in the accounting system properly instead of what happens to us now, which for like two months at the end of the year, we're just tearing our hair out trying to catch it all.
So, we'd end up with all of your people in this one building.
In this one, on that one hallway, as a matter of fact.
Thank you.
Cindy, along that line, two and a half years ago or so, we were presented with a document which was the physical assets of the electrical system. And if you guys remember that document, it was probably about this thick and it listed wrenches and jeeps and trucks and it listed, I mean, just an incredible array of document, of types of equipment that had in the past been purchased for the electrical system from their budgets at one point or another and nobody could answer the question for me, "Are all those things still a part of the city?" It was just this massive list of everything that had ever been purchased for it and we hoped it was there and et cetera, et cetera.
We actually did a big physical inventory. I mean, that whole question was part of it, plus just good accounting practices. At the end of fiscal 11/12, we did a massive physical inventory and that did that adjustment to reflect what's really there.
My question is, have we done that for all other city departments? Do we know what the assets are of the city?
We did a citywide inventory. Now, keeping a couple of things in mind, we have a capitalization threshold of $1,000 and wow, that's incredibly, incredibly low by generally accepted accounting standards. And so, we could probably have another look at that and frankly, I would wait till after the sale of the electric utility, but that captures a tremendous quantity of things. You know, there's a difference too between capitalizing assets to reflect them on your books and managing them because even if something's worth less than $1,000, it's very important to keep track of it.
Sure.
So, there's kind of two different methods for things that are above and below that threshold. But yes, that physical inventory was all city departments, it was not just the electric utility.
Mr. Wang? To take this down, I'm sorry, I'm continuing down this line of thought. Now, to take that down one more step, do the individual departments throughout the city purchase their own supplies?
I'm going to let John speak to that because it's a yes and no. I mean, there are places where common purchasing contracts give us greater efficiency and better pricing and there are places where city departments have the ability to purchase their own supplies, but.
And that's what I thought the answer was. If you don't mind, I just want to tell you where I'm going with that. One more step down is, for instance, in the city clerk's office, we have big shelves full of papers and file folders and stuff and we just have a whole office supply, mini staples in there with everything. Are we purchasing those supplies on an as-needed basis based on our contracts or are individual departments just purchasing what they want and storing it up and going home with them or whatever?
Office supplies, individual departments make their own purchases, but, you know, on an as-needed basis because everyone's needs are so different.
However, would there be the potential of a cost savings if we all utilize the same one-stop place and if we needed something, it was requisitioned as opposed to going out and purchasing it on the.
We talked about centralizing.
We use Office Depot too, for one thing, and we actually get government pricing from Office Depot and from Staples as well. So, I mean, we don't, when you open up that Office Depot catalog, that's not the price that we're paying.
No, we have, John O'Brien manager of purchasing, we've set up for all city departments, they'll use Office Depot and Capital Office Supply. departments, they'll use Office Depot and Capitol Office Supply. They can go right on their computer, they keep a standardized, if you will, grocery shopping list. If I need a 3M sticky pad, they hit it, it gets delivered to them. So we have consolidated and made it an efficient process. No one has to get out of the office to, you know, 15 years ago, you, an administrative assistant would go out and have to shop individually. So what you see is departments ordering the supplies they need. If they need a couple reams of paper, whatever their supplies are, they order them. We have a contracted price. Office Supply, Office Depot delivers within a day to any department. Even if you order five pencils, they prefer you to order more, but they'll deliver whatever you order within 24 hours. So we're, I'd say we're pretty efficient on that, actually.
Including the fact that they have the possibility, as you mentioned, the 3M Post-it note, as opposed to the generic Post-it note that may be less expensive?
I-
That's my concern.
Yeah, I don't-
I wanted to see how we can save the most money in terms of utilization of all different supplies throughout the city, and if we can have a set of standards-
We do about $50,000, I think, with Office Depot, $50,000. I don't know the difference between the generic, I don't know if people are buying generic-
I know.
-or trying to save, so. I'm just trying to let you-
It's the paradigm behind this question.
Yeah, I think we're pretty conscientious.
The Office Depot government pricing is very good, too, but, you know, I know, depending on the function of your department, her office supply needs are very different from mine, or very different from what kinds of things other people use, depending on what they're storing and filing and processing. But, you know, I think we do, we do pretty well there. Our concern, though, is as we reduce this, we're going the other direction, from the ability to have a centralized purchasing function for lots and lots of things, to more and more, you know, push back to the other departments. I think before we talk more about the specifics, there's one impact in purchasing in the warehouse, or two. You know, the idea is that we would eventually eliminate the warehouse entirely. To move in that direction, to get ready to do that at the sale of the electric utility, the first thing we'd be eliminating in October the first is the Public Works, Parks and Rec, kind of general sort of supplies inventory that's over there, with the goal toward going to a point where all that's left is the, is water and sewer, and that either being absorbed into water and sewer as a function, or them finding a way to do just-in-time delivery of supplies as well. But there's another function out of the warehouse that has, going to have a big impact on the other departments, and that is what we call our delivery services attendant, which is essentially our internal mail person. Both the delivery of inter-office mail, as well as post-office mail. Post-office mail, including the flow of many, many thousands of electric utility bills to and from the post office, as well as all the other, all the other mail that's received at City Hall. That's one where, again, with the direction to lower costs and eliminate staffing, that was the one that we were able to do at this point, but it will have a big impact on other city departments, including everyone having to carry and sort their own inter-office mail, and having the internal departments, well, but the bigger one-
It's against efficiency.
As, the same time that people are reducing staff, they're going to have to load that onto a staff member.
I mean, you know.
Well, you know, the bigger one than the inter-office mail is the post-office mail, because some, the City Hall departments are going to have to have one rotating a day a week, where their department's responsible for the pickup and posting of all the post-office mail, and that's probably a bigger one right there that doesn't make sense to me.
What do we say, $35,000 a year?
Straight up, it's probably 45 or 50, but a lot of that's charged out to the, to the other funds as well.
It makes no sense to me.
And I agree. That is an effort on reduction of numbers of people. That's where that was coming from, so.
Yeah, I don't know, but it may tie you in knots. You're, I think we agree, even though our ops ends the table, right?
I'm afraid I don't concur with you on this.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's a way that we can find, yeah, there's a way we could find with the staff to address this issue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Winger, are you saying that you feel it's acceptable, from what I just heard, that the city is paying an individual to deliver mail, 46,000 or more a year, plus the pension, plus the insurance, plus, that's everything?
Yeah, all I'm saying, suggesting is, I don't know the answer to your question, but I'm suggesting it may cause more than $46,000 worth of trouble, and I just don't know. I mean, I don't know the answer to your question.
I don't, I don't either.
I'd like to know the alternative. Without, without knowing the alternative, what's going to happen?
The alternative is each department would rotate that function.
I don't understand what you're saying. You're saying that the city clerk's office one day will send one of their staff out to deliver mail to the entire municipality?
Please pick up the mail and sort it.
Two different, two different, two different functions of mail. Inter-office mail will be each department's responsibility on their own, but the post-office mail will be some sort of a rotating function, because it has to get to and from the post office, probably once a day instead of twice, et cetera. If you, you know, I'm normally not in a, I don't offer a lot of opinions. To me, this is one where, you know, to make cuts, I have to make cuts, and I've got a limited amount of places to go, because I have very small staff in every one of these departments. To me, this is one that's a bit of a false economy, because I really think it impacts the workload in every other department, in a way that's, particularly now that I'm down to two cashiers, you know, we're talking about a lot of electric utility bill mail, too, as well. So I can certainly do it, and we'll handle it, and that's why I said we would find a way to handle it, but-
I would tend to go with your feeling on this. I mean, I don't think we need a big research project. That's what I think.
I agree with Dick for once. I think it is false economy.
I'd just like to know what the alternative is. If you don't know what the impacts are, I mean-
The alternative is what we've proposed, which is that some of the function will become the function of each department.
You're already cutting the other departments, and now you're saying you're going to take even more time away from them.
I've worked in places where inter-office mail was a responsibility of every individual department, and different people rotated the function to get the mail back and to and from the post office.
Everybody was in the same building. I mean, I could see how that would really work, but I can't imagine, you know, each department jumping in the car and running all over the place.
It's not the efficient way.
Is there, you're saying that the individual does this twice a day, goes around?
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, I understand where you're saying from. No, nobody from Water and Sewer would jump in the car and go all over the city. There's a mailroom. So now, rather than this individual who makes the rounds twice a day, gets it from all the places, takes it to the mailroom, and sorts it into individual people's boxes, for instance, one person would have to come out from Water and Sewer, however often they, you know, deem is appropriate, to the mailroom and do that themselves. So no, it wouldn't be running all over the city, but again, we get, the other thing we get is inter-office mail delivery, inter-office, to the county building, and we wouldn't have that opportunity anymore. So again, you'll need either postage or some additional running around. You know, it's a, it's a small amount, I personally think it's a small amount of money for something that provides a lot of movement and efficiency for the rest of the organization.
So Tim and the Marina, I don't know how many people he has left, because we haven't got that far yet, but he had very many people left. So what's going to happen is Tim, because somebody from the Marina is going to have to go places in their car.
That's absurd.
Why don't they come over here once a day, anyway?
I was going to say, so he takes a break for lunch and he brings the mail? I'm sorry, I don't think this is a big issue. I don't think our employees are, you know, are that, that busy that we can't find somebody with each department to handle this.
Well, I disagree. I think we need to keep that mail person online.
Cindy, you said the mail person does the rounds twice a day. What if they were cut back to part-time and did that once a day? Would that impact severely?
That's certainly one of the things we could consider. I mean, we could make it as much or as little as you like. I know John might have something he wants to add about any other functions that he performs over there as well.
Not only does, he picks up the mail, does the inter-office mail, and then he also handles any packages that departments have, that we handle out, like all the UPS packages. If anyone, like if IT has a computer that gets sent back, he picks up the computer, we take it, he drops it off at the warehouse, the warehouse personnel packages it, pays the bill, sends it out to UPS, and handles all that. So it's not just in City Hall, there's a service that they provide for any outgoing package. I'm not talking like FedEx, but there's a lot of packages that he carries out to the warehouse, which we package. Well, you get rid of him, the individual departments, anyone who's not located in City Hall, they, whether it's inter-office mail or metered mail, the US mail, they have to physically come here and pick it up out of their box, someone in City Hall would sort it. So there's, it's not an efficiency, but I mean, it's an efficiency to have them. It's inefficient, but it meets our budget, you know, and we can make it work. But anyone who's not physically here would have to come here to get any kind of mail. You know, if Water and Sewer has a package here, like when you're routing contracts, they go to purchasing, they go to the attorney's office, they go to Water and Sewer. So they go around to physically different sites, and it kind of doubles their time, so the mail going around is efficient process.
Let's get this issue settled. We beat this to death. How many people here want to keep the mailman? Okay, and who wants to get rid of him?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to keep the mailman.
You don't have an opinion?
I have no clue as to whether we're going to get an efficiency or not.
I think we lose efficiency, that's-
Well, you didn't vote, so what happens is, is a vote for, under standing rules, so.
You have anything on page 24? You said you want to get out of here for lunch sometime soon.
Yeah, okay, well, do you want to make a proper motion?
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn for lunch.
Okay, now, on page 24, I have two quick questions, and I agree with-
You don't have a second.
I have your thing.
Thanks.
If you look at printing and binding, year-to-date, we spent 3197, and there may be a good reason for it, but I don't know what it is. And the one below it, advertising, I don't know what we're advertising, prior year, we spent 2316. This year, we spent nothing, and we have a $4,000 budget. Those two items, I'd like to know. Why?
The advertising is entirely trim advertising for the budget, so it only kicks in, and I only pay for it in August and September. We are required by law, prior to the final public hearing, to publish an ad for the proposed mileage and the proposed budget, and it's kind of a big ad, and sometimes it's kind of expensive. So we, I mean, we take a look at law and that's-
The font sizes are required by state statutes, right?
The size is required, and-
So we can't squeeze it down.
It has to be touching, and it has to be on a particular page, and-
Do you need four, or would three work?
I can go have another look at that. Three might work. The printing and binding, you know, based on prior year's actuals, and it includes, you know, the cashiering side of it as well, and money we pay for cashiering supplies, which certainly varies from year to year. We may have been achieving some savings because of our new, because of our new contract, but there's also a lot of printing that goes on during budget season as well, like-
Speaking of printing, are you going to continue doing the monthly report, or no?
You know, again, that's something that I think that we've tried to go paperless as much as possible. We only now, at this point, provide paper copies for the Finance Commission and the Council, the rest of it goes online, including to the other commissions.
So that's not a major savings, is what you're saying? It wouldn't save that?
It's more of a time savings than a dollar savings here, but we've already, we've already driven the cost of the printing, et cetera, down by just not distributing so many paper copies of everything. Starting with general ledgers a few years back, we stopped making huge paper copies of those for everyone.
Mr. Mayor, this is just an asterisk. I like the general ledger a lot better than the monthly income statement, for what it's worth. It's got more information, and it's got balance sheet, the whole thing.
She prints it out for you if you need it, though, right?
I steal it from Tammy.
Borrow it permanently. We don't steal here.
It's available on the O-drive as well, so.
It is on the O-drive, okay.
Cindy, one of your expenses with printing and binding are the documents such as this, the proposed budget, is that not correct? Tammy, when members of the public or the press ask for copies of these, are they charged a fee for that, since the city is paying for that?
Not if I have an extra book. If I have an extra book, which Cindy has given me a couple for the press, for like the budget books, then I will allow them to-
Right, but she has extras, because she printed more. If she printed the exact number needed, she wouldn't have extras, and people wouldn't be getting these, you know, $10, $20 documents for free.
Correct, and then I would refer them to online. Everything's online now.
Something to keep in mind.
You do those monthly budget review books or whatever? If you went to quarterly, would that save quite a bit?
Again, not dollar-wise in printing and binding, but it certainly, I mean, that's something that, you know, Javier prepares those reports, we review them. I think the way I explained it to the Finance Commission is, we close our month, every month, and we review all of our line items all the time, as well as monthly. Our internal process has nothing to do with the external reporting, and we're not going to change a thing about how we manage our accounting.